Welcome everyone to our special color meeting Tuesday, November twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifty. If you please stand will have Commissioner Flynn do our invocation or prayer.
Mr. Frank, I follow you come again in your name, thank you again for all your many blessings. We swear upon this, we thank you for portion of life, health, and strength. We thank you for how you've always had blessed. We pray to keep you throughout these holidays, bless you with heart, soul, and mind. Give us some time, be rest tonight as you reveal what your reputation for the nature. We acknowledge you in all things which we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first item of business, receiving is approval of renewal of resolution declaring local state of purpose of U. Tobe nineteen day, March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. Have any questions, comments, or have a motion to approve? Have a motion by Commissioner Flynn?
Second.
Or second, sorry. Second by Commissioner Hale, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed same time, Commissioner. Item number two is authorized county administrator to execute lease payment of rent power investments LLC for eight catapult and motor graders, an annual amount of two hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty cents to your turn, pending county attorney review. I know there was questions on this on the last meeting, so I pulled it to bring it back and get those answers. Do I have any questions or comments, or have a motion to approve at this time?
If you want, I'll give a motion if we have a motion I got to. Did Mr. Harris not do this for the attorney, for review? Everything was good, everything was all good?
Yes, sir. The question that was raised last time was about the interest rate. And when we went back to them, the interest rate that was supposed to be for the program is three point five. So we've got three point five across the border for all of it. This reduced the amount of the budget expenditure, I paid approximately seven thousand dollars to hold me to it, but it's right at seven thousand. And I've already done through the rest of the paperwork.
Very thankful.
Yes, sir.
I believe that, have a motion by Commissioner White?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed same time, motion carries. At this time, Mr. Perry Walden, sir, you want to give us proof of day on COVID?
Yes, sir.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Gentlemen, I appreciate the opportunity. Today, we had three thousand two hundred and twenty-six COVID cases, that's our first case in March. We've been seeing a slight increase in our number of cases, if you recall. And it's last year, we were averaging about six cases a day. Over the last fourteen days, we've been averaging about ten cases a day, which is not to be alarming. This is not like you're hearing in the media that we've got an increase, a huge spike, or a big surge. So far, we've been fortunate in Swanee County that we have not encountered that or seen. We are seeing a lot of folks getting tested at the emergency room, hospitals, doctors' offices, pharmacies, as well as through the health department. We are put out our December testing schedule today. Y'all will have your email address to the county email where we sent the release. We'll be testing December the first, the fifteenth, and the twenty-ninth at the Coliseum from nine AM to eleven AM. You do not need an appointment, you just need to show up and be ready to be tested. We have asked for the mobile testing bus to come back to Swanee County. So far, we've not been successful, but we like the mobile testing bus for two reasons. Number one, it utilizes state resources that don't tie up our local resources. And second, we're able to move it to the different communities in the county. So we've been able to go to Wilbur, Branford, and Lydon. So we're still trying to work on that to make sure that we can potentially have access to that the month of December. And looking at our positivity rate, this is still a strong indicator of where we are. Over the last fourteen days, we're averaging about seven point four percent, which is a very, very slight increase from where we were. As long as we can stay under ten percent, we're doing well. We can get it below five percent, we're doing great. So I'm still encouraged by our numbers and, you know, I don't want y'all to have fear or to be scared. We are not seeing the strong surge that the media is talking about. We want folks to continue to practice social distancing, proper mitigations. If you're out in public, if you're going to be around large crowd, please wear your mask and do those things to protect yourself as well as the others. And then Thanksgiving is coming up, and we'll be around family and friends. Just be mindful of where you are and, you know, how many folks, if you're in a confined space, just take some proper protocol and measures. Wash your hands, spread them. And I'd be glad to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman, here on my head.
I have any questions for Mr. Walden? Yes, sir.
It's not illiterate, but misunderstanding. Appreciate everything that you do for this county. The question I do have is, uh, when they do test positive, there's a fourteen day hold over there? Fourteen, ten, seven, seven, ten, fourteen days in that period or what are you talking about?
Well, everybody's body's different. If you test positive, you are to, and you're symptomatic, which means you have symptoms, you are to isolate for ten days. And if you are improved within that ten days and have no fever for twenty-four hours, and your symptoms have improved, you can go back to work. Now, if you're in close contact, which means you're around somebody that's tested positive for more than fifteen minutes for less than six feet, you need to stay home and you need to quarantine. However, if you're an essential worker, and based upon the governor's declaration, we have, there are more essential workers than there are non-essential workers. You can continue to work, provided you're asymptomatic, you wear your mask, and you social distance.
Because I know sometimes, and I share this at work, you know, we do tests, we check, you know, we do our temperature every night going in, which I haven't been to work in five, six days back. Some of the, some of these, I think, some of the employees, they have been around individuals that have been and perhaps going in our stores, having a mask on, enjoying the time. That you may have come in contact with an individual and you don't know, but...
Sure, but you may also have come in contact with somebody that's been positive, but you've not been around them for that period of time to where if they were infectious, that the likelihood of you getting it is very minimal. That's why we look at close contact. And that's been, you know, great conversations with folks about, are you truly a close contact? And then you get to talking to them, and you say, well, I stopped and talked to them for about three minutes, four minutes, and I went on my way. Well, the likelihood of you becoming infectious is very, very small. But thank you. You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes, Mr. Herr.
Two things, to your knowledge, is our nursing home facilities, now they have plenty of PPE, if they haven't seen any more shortages or issues or problems.
No shortages of PPE in our nursing homes. What we are seeing in some of our nursing homes, they are having cases, but they are asymptomatic, which is real good. Now, with the OCHA regulations, they're having to test on a weekly basis. And so they're testing staff and residents. Majority of our facilities, if they do have a positive case, they are sending them to a sister facility where they have a designated COVID wing set up, and they're able to manage that pretty successfully. But we did have a infection control specialist here last week with one of our facilities to work with them. And I find to see that they're doing things very well, just some minor tweaking in some areas. Because we've all been fighting this long and hard, and we just can't let our guard down. And we've got to keep those protocols in place and just make sure that we don't forget to wash our hands or to put a re-glove or change out our gowns and so forth.
And second thing, and I think they have, is the turnaround time on the test results, is that approved in the levelled out working system now?
It's every break.
Okay.
Because right now, the lab is, the state lab capacity is significant, and we're sending all of our testing samples there. And we generally have test results back in about thirty-six hours.
That's true.
There's still all folks doing the rapid test over in Columbia County at one of the pharmacies. Still caution you, just because you test today negative does not mean you're negative tomorrow. Because a COVID test is that, that you test, at the point in time you test, you're either positive or you're negative. So be mindful, there's an incubation period of two to fourteen days. So that's why we got to keep up doing what we're doing with our social distancing and washing. But just be mindful of how close we are to others.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walden, appreciate it.
Thank you.
At this time, do we have any more from the public wishing to speak? Seeing closed public comment. At this time, we'll just go to closed comments, Commissioner, Commissioner White, you have anything?
I'm good.
Sorry.
I'm good. I got someone, I got someone I'd like to talk about.
Yes, sir.
Don't mind if I go to COVID?
Yes, sir, that's not.
I'll talk ahead.
Commissioner Land, closed comments.
Um, first off, I'd like to say that my first week on the job is not what I thought it would be. It's been a roller coaster of emotions. I've enjoyed it, I've had to roll my sleeves up and get to work right off, right off the bat. And I'm excited about it, I'm looking forward to it, and it's, it's, it's going to be a good challenge. I have some constituents, some friends that are asking me some questions that frankly, I don't have the answers to. Mr. Brevat scared me to death of sunshine laws, and so I'm just going to have to ask him publicly. Let you guys know what I found. I've studied about this, I've asked a few mentors about this, and guided our respect in the community. I've prayed about it, I prayed about it some more. But I made a promise to people in Swanee County, that I was going to watch their money like it was mine. And I intend on keeping that promise to the best of my ability. No matter how long the road is or how high the weeds, I'm going, I'm going to hold it. You know, so I tried, I tried my best to handle this privately, and it just, it didn't work for me. So I'm here. So here we go. I'm going to read you a couple scriptures that I kept coming back to over the past week. One of them, Thessalonians thirteen four, it says, "Serve only the Lord your God and fear him alone. Obey his commands, listen to his voice, and cling to him." Another one's Ephesians five eleven, "Have nothing to do with the fruitless deeds of darkness, but rather expose them." And I had to write this down because I didn't want to leave anything out. I didn't want to misspeak, but I'm going to read this. I'll try to look at you guys accordingly. On November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, at the normally scheduled commission meeting, a town specific item was on the agenda for a zoning change application submitted by Insight Holdings LLC of one oh nine, one ten Northwest, three fourteen Silver Springs, Florida. The applicant, the application was to change the zoning from agricultural to commercial. I asked multiple questions. Is there a site plan for the intended project? This area already has significant traffic concerns with accidents occurring weekly at this interchange. What access would the applicant be using for access onto one twenty-nine? Mr. Harris stated, "The traffic congestion was at the interchange, not at this actual site, which is pointed by a mile away from the interchange," defending the applicant. Mr. Brevat stated, "The county had given the applicant an easement to cross the county's newly purchased property as an access point," defending the applicant. I have not been able to find public records or amendments where an easement across the county's newly purchased property was granted. The application passed four to one with me dissenting. I have a survey enclosed, I got a copy of this for all of you guys. I met, I met, on November the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, I met Mr. Harris privately in his office around five PM with concerns. I asked Mr. Harris if he knew Mr. Ron Adams, the owner of Insight. He stated he did, but he did not elaborate to which extent. I asked Mr. Harris if he had any ownership or financial interest in Insight LLC or its properties, in which he denied any. I asked Mr. Harris, "Why didn't the county purchase the entire parcel of nineteen point six one acres?" In which he stated, "We didn't need that much, and the county isn't in the commercial business, so we didn't need the highway frontage." I suggested it would have been in the county's best interest to purchase the whole parcel, then wait until DOT confirmed the new traffic patterns. At that point, the county could determine where we would place our fire station, then sell the rest to the public. He stated, "The county isn't in the business of surplusing properties," in which I stated, "In this case, it would have been in the best interest for only sixty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars." None of this added up to me, it just didn't make sense. Later that evening, on November the eighteenth, I contacted the seller of the property, Mr. Cobble. Mr. Cobble stated that Commissioner Hale came to him back in two thousand and nineteen and asked if he'd sell the county property. Mr. Cobble stated, "Yes. Hale offered five thousand per acre to be bought by the county, Cobble refused. Hale offered sixty-five hundred, Cobble refused. Cobble countered at sixty-five hundred per acre or appraised value, whichever is more." According to Mr. Cobble, this is where Mr. Harris took over. Mr. Harris sent Mr. Cobble a contract to purchase, to purchase the buyer, Mr. Randy Harris, as agent for confidential, undisclosed principal. The property later appraised at eight thousand, two hundred, twenty dollars per acre by Mr. Bill U. Connor, a local licensed real estate appraiser. The purchase price was adjusted to a hundred and sixty thousand. According to Mr. Cobble, Mr. Harris contacted Mr. Cobble and stated the county didn't have that amount budgeted for the new station. And did Mr. Cobble object to the buyer exercising its assignability clause in the contract to another buyer for parcel A, the front parcel, in order to close the transaction? Mr. Cobble agreed, as long as the purchase price didn't change. Mr. Cobble stated, "He never met Mr. Adams, the owner of Insight, until the date of closing at Mr. Brevat's office. He never had any negotiation with Mr. Adams. Mr. Harris executed all the, all the negotiations and the closing arrangements. Mr. Cobble's first time meeting at Mr. Adams was the day of the closing. During the closing, on the county's eleven point one four acre tract, Mr. Brevat and Mr. Harris stated to Mr. Cobble, "If you don't mind, let's keep this confidential." Mr. Cobble then es, was then escorted to Mr. John Parker's office where the closing to Insight occurred, just next door. It was at this time, Mr. Cobble felt like something wasn't quite right. It was odd that the county brought a buyer to the table, sold this buyer, all the road frontage of the track, except the thirty-foot strip and sixty-foot strip subject to the easement. Insight bought the remaining one thousand, two hundred, forty-eight feet of highway frontage on US one twenty-nine at the same exact price per acre as the county's inferior tract with less frontage on the highway. However, this purchase price remained the same, and he was no longer a resident in Swanee County nor following its local events. He didn't, he didn't think much more about it. Mr. Herr, Mr. Harris failed to mention any of this in my meeting with him several hours before. Enclosed is a copy of a satisfaction of mortgage, exhibit B, from Mr. Randall D. Harris and Susan J. Harris on a home that is catty corner across the street from Mr. Ronald Adams, the owner of Insight in Silver Springs, Florida. It appears that in fact, Mr. Adams is much more than an acquaintance, but more like a previous neighbor than Mr. Harris. My questions. Number one, Mr. Harris and Mr. Brevat are both representatives of Swanee County. Why didn't they act best in the, in the best interest of the people and bring this transaction back to the board for direction? It clearly would have been in the county's best interest to complete the purchase of the nineteen point six one acres in its entirety seeing what the traffic plan is later developed by DOT. Number two, in what power did Mr. Harris have to execute a land purchase agreement in his personal name, the way the contract was written? And why didn't Mr. Brevat ask this question? And what power did Mr. Harris have to seek the new buyer, Mr. Adams, for the front parcel without board approval? An admitted acquaintance of his. However, Mr. Harris owned a home across the street from Mr. Adams in Silver Springs, Florida. It was the county's initial interest in, initial, it was the county's initial interest that initiated the contract negotiations. Wouldn't it be right for the board to determine the path that negotiation took? The parcel owned by, number three, the parcel owned by Insight has been listed on the MLS real estate market for over a hundred and sixty days at an asking price of six hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, from six hundred and twenty-three, seven, six hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars. It clearly shows Insight used this relationship with Mr. Harris to purchase undervalued property with its insider information of future development plans that was a sole private business of the county's. The people of Swanee County should own this track, build our fire station, then sell the remaining property for the large profit Insight is pursuing to the extent of four hundred thousand dollars. I got a copy of the MLS page enclosed. I'm not stating in closing, I'm not stating anyone broke the law, I'm not asking for anyone to be terminated. But what I am asking is, why did this happen, and how do we prevent it from happening again? If a third party is needed to investigate, then so be it. I tried myself, but Mr. Harris chose to leave many important events out with his testimony to me about this transaction. The citizens of Swanee County deserve to know exactly how this deal transpired and why we ended up with an inferior piece of property at the same purchase price per acre. I don't know where y'all go with that, that's all I got, I got copies for all of you. It's, it's been a hell of a week for me. I got constituents asking me questions, I don't have answers, I tried to get them from Mr. Harris, and when it just, it just, it just, the more I dug, the worse it smelled. And, and I just kept coming back to, something's not right. That prompted me to call Mr. Cobble, when he told me a lot more details, I gave Mr. Harris a chance to tell me, "I got concerns, guys, I got, I just, I got concerns, and I got all you guys a copy of this, y'all can study on it, I don't have a motion. I'm new, I don't know where we go, but maybe there's answers, and I misunderstood it." I tried to get to that with Mr. Harris, hoping that there was an explanation. It just doesn't make sense, doesn't make sense. Y'all got questions, I'll tell you what I know, because all I know to do is tell the truth. I would raise the, ask questions, pray about it. The hardest thing to do, the right thing to do is never the easiest thing to do.
When, when did you? Mr. White?
When did you say that went on the MLS?
It's been on the market a hundred and sixty-something days when I looked at it last week.
For that price?
I don't know if they had any, when I looked at it, it was for six hundred and twenty-three thousand. I don't know, I would have to talk to Mr. Poole's office, it's listed with Anita Handy, I've had to ask her when it was listed and what price. The Realtor dot com doesn't show you those adjustments, but, I mean, we could ask Mr. Poole, Mr. Handy.
Well, the only reason I was asking was because we just did the zoning on it.
Yes, sir.
And this has been on there for a hundred and sixty days. How, how long have they on, how long did this transaction?
This transaction happened the same day, minutes apart, from when we bought our fire station property.
And when, when was that?
November fifteen-ish, two thousand and nineteen, it was in November.
Oh, it was in nineteen, okay.
Insight has owned the property for just over a year. Honestly, I found it coincidental that on my very first, very first meeting, I was hit with a zoning change with smoke all around it. I call it smoke, I may be making false accusations, but it just doesn't add up. And it really tripped me up when Mr. Harris didn't, was not forthcoming with a lot of information that I was asking for. It was Mr. Cobble that enlightened me on a lot of details that were left out. If, if the county had the entire parcel under, under contract, guys, we got four million dollars in the hospital budget sitting there, been sitting there since we sold it. We could have tapped into that for sixty-seven thousand dollars and bought the whole tract.
How much did you see up there?
Sixty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars.
Sixty-seven thousand.
That was for the eight acres?
That was for the front parcel.
Eight point one acres?
Eight point nine one acres. He bought that for sixty-seven thousand dollars. Mr. Harris stated, "It wasn't in the budget for us to buy that." We got sixty-seven thousand dollars. When the dust clears on the DOT plans, then we pick where we want to put our fire station, and we sell what we don't need. Instead, we got a piece of property sitting way in the damn back with a little bitty strip to the road. Mr. Harris's ex-cross-the-street neighbor got twelve-hundred foot of road frontage at the same damn price we paid. Now that, something ain't right.
Mr. Land, I, I understand your concerns on Mr. Poole's, Peter's side.
Okay, I'm sorry, I've been passionate, it's been way on for a week.
I know your passions, I know you, you got a lot on your mind.
I got a lot of people on me, and I got, I apologize.
We've all been in a position to not the same situation here, trust me.
And probably that is my, I mean, right out of the gate, I'm like, man, that's what I said when I first started, I don't know that I signed up for this.
I understand.
Anyway, I'm here, and I, I, I'm going to do the best I can for folks. And I'm, I'm, I don't know where to go with this, guys, I don't know if we, if we make a motion, I don't, I don't know. I'm just, gotta air it out in public, give it sunshine.
Well, at this time, I think it's a lot for everyone to take in, and I'm, at this time, I don't have a whole lot of comment on it until obviously everyone wants to research and understand what you said. Commissioner Flynn, do you have any other questions or comments for Mr. Land?
You know, so I, I, I appreciate your, your camera and bringing it out. I do have a copy now, and I, you know, I don't know, when I, when you sit down, I can say what I want to say.
Okay, I'm done, I just, I don't, I mean, yeah.
Mr. Herr, you have anything?
No, that's not. The only thing I'll say is, um, the conversation between Mr. Cobble and him was only on the property in the back of this thing. That's the only one that I had inquired about, so just, I never even inquired about any property up front.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
So, not another, we ended up with a contract on the whole piece.
Yeah, I had only inquired about the property in the back.
Right, I don't think you did.
Yeah.
Truthfully, I don't think you did anything wrong. I, I think the smoke started when Mr. Harris got involved, and like, whoa, wait a minute. If the opportunity was on the table for us to buy it all, you initiated it as a representative of the county. You handed it to Mr. Harris as an employee of the county. Why did Mr. Harris continue to keep our best interest at par, knowing that now the whole parcel's available? Why didn't, okay, we'll just buy it all, and then we won't worry about where DOT puts a red light, or we have thirteen hundred feet to play with. Instead, we got thirty. All right, I'm done, I'm sorry.
Anything else, Commissioner Land?
Not, sure not, unless y'all got questions.
Commissioner Flynn, close comments.
Okay, now, first of all, I'll introduce somebody, not he's, uh, my, uh, my good friend, close friend, cousin, family member, Marty Cuthbert, he's not, he's one of my constituents. It's always good to have some constituents come and attend the meetings, know what's going on. But my, my, as Commissioner Land was saying, that's why it's so important, that's why I care, that we go to these conferences, we turn it, and point it, they, they care, we try to keep you out of the trap. So many times, we see the sunshine law be violated, and it's no joke, I, I, I've never missed any. I've been to everyone, and then I got to make sure, Commissioner, if you get the opportunity, I saw Mr. Brevat, I know the terms, so, it's, it's good to go to know the right protocol, which is probably just a situation that, uh, we got one coming up next month, next week I'll be attending. Anyway, I appreciate you bringing it out, I don't know anything, anything could come out of it, I don't, I don't know, but we, you know, I was employed at a corporation. They had technicians, TVs, stereos, furniture, etc. All that made corporations work. Good findings make me, make me live a different, a different living, you know, probably with other commissioners, I look at the chairman. The chairman, he did a great job, and he left that back, because I have a desire, you know, to support him myself. And Commissioner Hill, you know, how we all work, we work as a team. We had a great board last year, and I look forward to Commissioner White, that we have another great board. We don't, we don't, we disagree to agree, and we don't fall back, because at the end of the day, we still have to conduct county business. I thank you for your findings, and I, I look, looking to that, you know, to come out. But I have power, I have it, for what you did, what you found out, and every commissioner that sits up here in fact, you're very important. You got my brothers, very important. So, I have to.
Commissioner Flynn, Commissioner Ryan, don't comment.
Just want to wish everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving, and just keep in mind what Mr. Uh, uh, Marde, uh, Morgan said, as far as being safe.
I'm reading that.
Yeah, I've been reading this and trying to think of that, too, uh, being safe and being mindful of others and respecting their space, and, you know, we got to be smart. I know this, like Mr. Morgan said, we had a small uptick, just wanted to be mindful of that, so be safe.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. I don't have a whole lot to do, but it's nice to be able to just, uh, to tell, to tell you and everyone, just, I want to probably, they say, to be able to be with the families and just that can. Commissioner Ryan, do you have a, you have a big story that you're telling there? I'm still, I'm not saying...
I'm saying.
I'm, I'm saying.
I'm saying.
And obviously, every one of us here want to always think positive for anyone and everyone that represents the county. So, you know, at this time, like I said, I don't really have any comment other than to review and research and understand moving forward. I, I certainly do wish, uh, Mr. Harris was here to not to be able to respond and answer some of these things, I kind of, you know, I kind of hate that this happened at this time, but that's, uh, you're a commissioner, just like all the rest of us, none of, none of us here is any more powerful than the other, so you have the same right to speak and, and on the floor as much as any of the rest of us do. So I, I want you to always know that, it goes for everybody. It doesn't matter where you sit, we're all equal, we all have one goal, and that's how the system works. So, with that being said, the thing I need is a question to the chairman.
Chairman, I forgot, say a thank to everybody, appreciate it, again.
Thanks, sir. That was my permission, Commissioner Flynn.
Thank you.
Second, my Commissioner Hale, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.